Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners' meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kleka.
Here.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Ilert.
Here. All are present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to off or silent mode, so as not to interfere with our communication. For the record, mine is off. Just wanted to make sure. If it sounds, it's not my fault. It's the technology. We do have one special presentation to make this morning. We'll do so at this time. I'm going to ask Ellen Orneke, who's Director of Emergency Management and Communications, and Mark Whalen to join me at the podium, as well as Fire Chief Kirk, who's President of the Chiefs Association. And we have a special recognition that's been given to Mark, and we want to recognize that, so. Ellen?
All right. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning to recognize Mark. If you'll just let me, for just a moment, share a small portion of the nomination that was submitted that ultimately resulted in Mark receiving this award. Mark has spent over 31 years with Johnson County in various capacities. He has been a dispatcher, assistant supervisor, a member of the Training Division, and for the last 13 years, a member of the Communication Services Division. Mark's passion for this profession can be seen both in the great contributions he has made to the department and in the relationships he has established throughout his career. He has played a key role in most major elements of how fire and EMS emergency dispatch operate today. He has worked with different departments dispatched by Johnson County EMC to develop response plans, create inter-agency agreements to help departments work better together, develop and maintain various databases for improving resource management, and support computer-aided dispatch with information services. It would be difficult to find an aspect in the operations of the department that doesn't have Mark's fingerprints on it. It's a little emotional, Mark. I have to say. Johnson County hasn't been the only benefactor of Mark's work throughout the years. As part of his duties, Mark serves in various capacities with other county, regional, and state agencies. He serves as the 911 Master Street Address Guide Coordinator for all jurisdictions in Johnson County. Give Mark an address, and he will tell you where it is and how to get there. And these gentlemen can tell you that. He's also part of various regional and state committees for Next Generation 911 and Emergency Resource Management. He is a member of the Kansas Task Force III State Emergency, or, excuse me, Incident Management Team, and a communications coordinator for the Mark Region. We can't imagine Johnson County EMC or emergency services in general without contributions from Mark Whalen. He has provided outstanding service to the county, the region, and the state throughout his long career that's worthy of recognition. Mark, congratulations on your award.
Thank you.
Chief, do you have a comment?
I do, I do. Mark, on behalf of the fire chiefs throughout the county, Chief Davis as well, I think Ellen summed up a lot of it, but as you turn around and look at the white shirts behind you, you know, with a short notice, they showed up, and this room would probably be filled, because you've touched every agency. And we all know that on tough questions, 826, I think it's 1-0-0-6 or 4, isn't it?
Twenty.
Twenty. Ten twenty, that's right, ten twenty. And we know who to call, because you've been an icon down there, and you have taught most people that even came through there that are, I think you even taught Ellen a thing or two, so, but you're an icon, and we appreciate you more than you'll ever know. So thank you very much.
Mark, congratulations, and I want to underscore, this recognition was given to Mark by the Mid-America Regional Council and their Public Safety Effort and Emergency Communications. So it really is a recognition on a regional basis for the good work that you do. And I think it goes without saying, those who are here this morning in the white shirts support that acknowledgement and the good work, important work, that you do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
You want to say anything?
Well, I'm.
All right.
Well, I wanted to thank everybody for coming today, of course. I am one of the dinosaurs. I actually started as an 18-year-old at the center in 1981 with no computers, no maps, had it all in our heads, and dispatched the units. Left for a couple of years, worked at Spring Hill Fire, but my true passion was in dispatch, so came back in '86 and been here ever since. Plan on staying through four more years. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, thank you. So keep the stand between the chief and Ellen. And Will. Wait, we got one more? Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Chief, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes.
I had the pleasure, as I mentioned several weeks ago, right, the meeting after that awards ceremony evening, I had the pleasure to attend, and I want to make sure everyone is aware of how serious this particular award is. We want to thank you for all you've done for our county and our citizens. And I want to also announce that Maury was able to give him the award. Our own Maury Thompson, he was also the EMC for that event that evening. So, Maury, thank you for all the work you've done with the Mid-America Regional Council. And thank you, chiefs and firefighters, for all you've done for us, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentation, so we'll move to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, we'd invite you to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission this morning during the public comment portion of the agenda? All right, there's been no one to be heard. The public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have one note for the record. I will be signing an agreement with the City of Shawnee for the public improvement of Johnson Drive from Martindale Street to I-435. Moving to the consent agenda, will the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda items?
Item number one, consider approving the May 3, 2018 business session minutes. Item number two, consider authorizing an exception to competition and approving service agreement renewals for respite care services with Kids TLC Incorporated and DCCCA Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $175,000 for one additional 12-month contract period ending June 30, 2019, per Administrative Policy and Procedure Number 110.180.A.16.
Is there a commissioner who would like to have either one of these considered separately? Is there anyone present who would like to have these items considered separately? If not, it's back before the commission. Mr. Osterhaus?
I'll move that we approve. The consent agenda is read.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Moving on to the action agenda.
Item number three, Resolution Number 026-18, consider City of Gardner application number Z-18-03. Request for rezoning of about 10 acres from CP-2 Commercial to R-3 Garden Apartment District to allow a multifamily apartment complex to be known as Garden Walk of Gardner at the northwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road.
Mr. Leipzig. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig, Planning Development Codes. This item is brought to you from the City of Gardner regarding the Garden Walk of Gardner. It is for a total of 60 units, including a community building. The applicant is Sean Smith, Belmont Development Corp. Company. This was approved by the City of Gardner on April 16, 2018, was also presented with the Airport Commission on April 25. Both of those entities were approved unanimously. Staff is also recommending approval of this item, and it is compatible with the New Century Airport Compatibility Plan.
Again, this item is before us because of the location adjacent or within the one mile of New Century Airport, is that right?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Any questions? Is the applicant present, or is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? All right, there being no one to, yes, did you wish?
I, I, I.
Okay. So noted, the planner from the City of Gardner is present, if there are any questions. All right, it's back before the commission. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 026-18, approving the City of Gardner application number Z-18-03, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution in regards to the item with the City of Gardner. Any questions or comments? All right, there being none, clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Item number four.
Resolution Number 02718, consider City of Olathe application number P-18-06. Final plat for a single-family residential subdivision to be known as The Greens at Prairie Highlands, 6th Plat, in the vicinity of 144th Street and St. Andrews Avenue, Olathe, Kansas.
Mr. Leipzig. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Leipzig. This item is brought before you, the City of Olathe, The Greens at Prairie Highlands. This is the 6th plat of this development for 64 lots and about 26 acres. It was approved by the City of Olathe on April 3, 2018. It was also unanimously approved by the Airport Commission on April 25, 2018. Staff, this item is before you because it was within one mile of the New Century Airport. It is compatible with the Johnson County Airport Compatibility Plan, and staff is also recommending approval.
Okay. Questions to the staff? Is the applicant present? Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on this item? There being no one to be heard, Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution Number 027-18, approving City of Olathe application number P-18-06, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution in regards to the final plats, as noted. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Leipzig, just a general question. Do we have forecasts for when the areas around the two airports will substantially be built out or developed, maybe that's a better term? Is that something that's going to take many years, or do you have any sense on that?
Offhand, Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that question. I know that that is addressed in the plans. I don't know the, how, when the plans are scheduled to be updated and renewed, but that is something that they look at as part of that, the review of those compatibility plans for both of them.
Very good. I'd be interested offline, maybe you can educate me a little bit.
Be happy to.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, the motion is before us and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Next item.
Item number five, Resolution Number 028-18, consider City of Olathe application number Final plat for a single-family residential subdivision to be known as Willow's Crossing, 3th Plat, located in the vicinity of 143rd Street and Flum Road, Olathe, Kansas.
Mr. Leipzig. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mr. of the Board, Jay Leipzig. This item is brought before you by Brian Rodrock, Rodrock Development, for 42 lots and about 30 acres from the City of Olathe. This is within the vicinity of the New Century, or, excuse me, the Johnson County Executive Airport. It was approved by the City of Olathe on April 17, 2018. It also unanimously approved by the Airport Commission on April 25. This item is a final plat, and so the final is in conformance with the preliminary plat. It's also in compliance with the Executive Airport Plan, and staff is recommending approval.
Okay. Questions to staff? Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? If not, it's back before the commission. A motion is in order. Mr. Kleka.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 028-18, approving the City of Olathe application number P-1804, for the reasons and subject to the stipulations set forth in the resolution.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolutions in regards to the final plat, as noted. No further questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Number six.
Resolution Number 035-18, consider declaring certain improvements to real property located at New Century Air Center as surplus, and disposing of such improvements by transfer to Fire District Number 1 of Johnson County, Kansas, for the appraised fair market value of $750,000, and authorizing the reallocation and expenditure of fund balances for FY 2018 out of the General Fund in the amount of $760,910 to be transferred to the Airport Fund as reimbursement for the improvements and for the reduced 2018 rent payments for the
Yes, Mr. Otto.
Good morning. Aaron Otto with the County Manager's Office. Just as a quick review, this will take the fire station that's currently owned by the county at New Century on the Parkway and transfer that to Fire District 1. The land will continue to be retained and owned by the county, and yesterday, the Airport Commission did approve a land lease contingent on the sale of the improvements that are referenced here to be entered into with the Fire District going forward. It's a 50-year roughly lease time horizon. The payment schedule is outlined below, and this kind of brings to conclusion the future of the station going forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions there may be, but I know we've talked and thought a lot about this topic over a number of months, so happy to answer whatever I can.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're at this point. It's been a complex issue involving federal agencies, local agencies, and so, anyway, good job. Questions? All right, is there anyone present who would like to address the commission on this item? There's no one to be heard, it's back before the commission. Mr. Brown?
Chairman, just a quick comment. I would like to thank Aaron, and Penny, and Maury, and Joe, and everybody in the County Manager's Office, and legal, and the Airport Board, and the Fire Board, and the Fire Chief. Did I leave anybody out, Aaron? Did I get everybody? I don't want to leave anybody out, I'm trying to remember everybody. But everybody that worked on this, this took, this was a conversation that took over a year. Everybody, at different times, heard something they didn't like, didn't care for, and insisted they weren't going to agree to, but in the end, we got to a mutual understanding and an agreement, and that's because everybody involved in this is a professional. And I'm glad that we finally got here, and I'm pleased to make the motion when it's appropriate. Thank you.
That motion would be in order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move the board approve Resolution Number 035-18 to declare the New Century Fire Station Building as surplus and to dispose of the property by transfer to Fire District Number 1 of Johnson County for the appraised fair market value of $750,000, as recommended by the Airport Commission. At its April 25, 2018 business meeting, approve the proposed real estate purchase contract, approve reimbursement of 2018 rent underpayments in the amount of $10,910, and the reallocation and expenditure of fund balances for FY 2018 out of the General Fund in the amount of $760,910 to be transferred to the Airport Fund.
Second. Motion's made and seconded to approve the resolution and the transfer of property in the monies involved, as noted, at New Century. Any further questions or discussion? Mr. Ashcraft.
Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is largely an administrative matter to deal with concerns by the FAA. Am I correct? There's nothing.
Primarily.
Well, in part, but it's not totally focused on FAA. Ms. Postock-Ferguson, can you?
Yes, there are several components that factored into this, including MEDACT involvement and a facility there that's, that we're being able to use with Fire District's permission, and then also for the Airport Commission and what they were, they could feel comfortable with as well. But a lot of that was contingent on the FAA fair market value.
Originally, it was the FAA that raised some issues in terms of how the monies were allocated.
They did.
Okay.
The history there is the fair market value of the lease, and they pointed that out about two and a half years ago, and they allowed us to finish out the lease, but the lease ended this year, and so, or this past year. So we, at that point, either needed to raise the lease rate or sell, but either way, we had to do it at fair market value.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we do have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Are there any other items on the action agenda?
No, sir.
All right, turning to reports and communications, Ms. Postock-Ferguson.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. There's two items in your packet, and then I have two additional items to add. The first one is the latest SIRI report. The unemployment rate for Johnson County is 2.9% during the month of March 2018, and it's been hovering right around 3% for the last few months. Also, the home sales year-to-date is 1,966 compared to last year, very close, 1,976. And residential building permits, single-family units, are at 431 compared to year-to-date last year of 390. The City of Shawnee has a TIF Development District, and they set a public hearing scheduled for Monday, June 11. The application is requesting creation of a new TIF district to include new use, mixed use residential units, and additional property, approximately 3 acres, within the TIF district. The proposed additional property joins the existing TIF district to the south. And there's more information in your packet, and this is one that the board may officially veto, the use of county tax dollars, thereby eliminating creation of the new district. If there's no other questions, I'm going to go on to the two other items I'd like to add. One is a meeting that took place yesterday, and I wanted to thank the sheriff for joining me. The core four, city and county managers, had a meeting recently, and out of that came a desire to have the police chiefs and the sheriff meet and talk about some possible synergies that we could work on. And we had that meeting yesterday, it was very well-attended, and some good ideas came out of that, included the Kansas City, Missouri City Manager and Police Chief, the Sheriff Hayden, Ross Capps from the Crime Lab, myself, Wyandotte County Sheriff, and Jackson County officials. And so, as we were wrapping up that meeting in downtown Kansas City, Missouri, mid-afternoon, the sheriff got a call of an incident taking place in Southern Ovaland Park, and so, he said, "Would you like to see the CERT team in action?" I said, "Of course." So, interesting timing, he was driving, so I was with him, and I got to see the CERT team, which is the sheriff's emergency response team, in action, and how they prepared and got to the gathering spot, and their commitment and readiness, I was very proud of, and it was neat to see them, along with the Ovaland Park officials and Olathe officials that were there as well. So, y'all should be proud of how they handled that. And it was neat to see that firsthand with the sheriff. And the last item I'd like to add is, we have a grant opportunity, and we need your permission to do this. It's a grant that has come somewhat last minute, but we want to take advantage of it. It's for a self-contained breathing apparatus, and the grant is in the amount of $126,000. Paul Davis is here to give additional information. Our match is 10%, and so, our match is fairly small, but as far as procedure goes, we will need a motion, and so Paul is here to give a highlight.
Thank you very much. The background is that MEDACT has 18 self-contained breathing apparatuses in use by our Special Operations Group and ASMAT to support the fire departments and law enforcement. We took advantage of a regional grant opportunity back earlier in the year with Edwardsville Fire Department and other fire departments in Leavenworth and Wyandotte Counties, and if we were to bear the cost of the replacement, it would cost over $126,000. With the regional grant, our share only becomes 10% of that, about $12,656. A few weeks ago, though, the feds told us that the grant was kicked out. And so, as I was preparing to move this forward to the county commission, I held it up, because it's not going to go anywhere, no sense in having an MOU come to you for nothing. Well, early this week, we learned that it had been revived, and so now we've got this opportunity. We've got until Tuesday, the 29th, to make a decision. We did account for this expenditure in the 2019 budget planning, but because it involves an MOU with other communities, saying that Johnson County will pay its share when it comes time, need to bring it to you for your attention and your approval.
Okay. Questions? All right, Mr. Allen.
If you're ready for a motion, I'd be glad.
That'll be fine.
Okay. I would move to accept the MEDACT grant for the breathing apparatuses.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to accept the grant, and with the participation by the county, as noted. Any further questions or comments? Well, thanks for staying on top of this, Paul.
Yeah. I feel lucky. I've got a copy of the MOU for your signature, and I can get it to the clerk for execution.
All right, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye.
Commissioner Osterhaus.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Ilert.
Aye. Motion carried. Anything else?
No other items, thank you.
All right, turning to commission comments, excuse me.
I can wait till comments. I had a question about the Shawnee TIF. I can wait.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, Ms. Postock-Ferguson, could you elaborate a little bit in terms of why we have official veto authority on this TIF? And in most TIF cases, and it seems like in all other TIF cases, we don't have any input.
When it, setting up the TIF district, that's when you have the veto power. The other, a lot of the times, we will bring forward the project plans, which is the next step in the TIF process, and Cindy may be able to add to that as well.
But this is, but this is the original creation.
Yes, this is 3 acres adding to the, next to the other TIF.
And so, there's no cost-benefit analysis?
All the information's attached of what we have.
Okay.
They acquired 3 more acres for the project.
And this is a 90% TIF cap, is that my understanding?
That I'm not sure. Yes, Chris is saying yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Schaefer.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a busy week, of course, a lot of things going on in this county, and they're all, they're all positive, okay? all, they're all positive, okay? Number one, last Saturday morning, we, a number of us attended the final Johnson County Legislative Breakfast, and I think it was well-attended, and I'm surprised to see that mess attended, the last meeting, so we know there's a lot of good things going on, so I think our crowd was there, so I let other people comment about that, okay? Last Friday evening, there was a fundraiser for the Shawnee Mission Indian Mission Museum in Fairway, Kansas, it was called Jazz It Up, so we had a good time there. But the most important thing, last Friday afternoon, was the final Planning Commission meeting, the subcommittee titled Development Patterns and Trends, and with that, the report and recommendations was shared with the Planning Commission last Tuesday afternoon at the Planning Commission meeting. It was very positive. Our planning commission member, Jason Meyer, complimented the staff and the process and the report. He said it hit all the points and exactly how policy should be made. The staff met with the committee members, the neighboring cities, the developers, and the farm families to get their input, and it was shared to all. He said it was the best process that he has been a part of, and he's been a member of the planning commission member for a number of years. As well, our own chairman, Iliff, complimented the writing style of the staff recommendations and some committee amendments. It is, he said it was easy for anyone to understand and as good a government document as he has ever seen, and when Mr. Iliff says something like that, that's positive, okay? We all know him. I want to compliment Jay and his staff for all the work you've done. This transpired over several Friday lunches over the past 6 months or so, and it's been a good report, and we'll be hearing and voting on the outcome of that here in the near future, so I want to make sure everybody's aware of that, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Jay, thank you, staff.
Mr. Klecker.
Mr. Chairman, first thing I'd like to make note on, this evening at 6 o'clock at Stillwell Elementary School, Sheriff is going to hold a town hall meeting that, in conjunction with the district here, with my district, so we're excited about the folks coming out, want to, Sheriff, it's, for the sheriff's office, it's a great time, because there have been some concerns within that area up there, as far as some activities going on there, so just going to reassure our constituents up there. At the same time, they'll get an introduction to the improvements to the Stillwell Community Park that's scheduled to open up around 4th of July, so that's 6 to 8, Stillwell Elementary School, which is on 199th off of just east of Metcalf. The second thing is, is a little more broader in nature. I'm not sure everybody's aware of tomorrow is called Red Shirt Day. It's in honor of Memorial Day and our soldiers, and so what I did, I went out and got some red shirts that should be worn tomorrow to, it's a, it's a sign that across country here to recognize our soldiers, those in the military, as well as our families, and just as a token of remembrance for what they're up to there, and want to express everyone to have a great Memorial Day and think about why it is Memorial Day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman, other than I'm not sure what size Mr. Klecker thinks I am, but I appreciate the gesture.
I'm flattered by his...
Don't argue about that. Mr. Chairman, I do have one other item.
I haven't received a medium shirt since I was in 3rd grade.
Actually, there are multiple sizes, but there is ribbon cutting tomorrow, update here, net for our new, out at the Shawnee Mission Park.
No, no, it's Saturday.
Or Saturday, I'm getting my days mixed up, and encourage, there are so many ribbon cuttings and openings with parks, it's hard to keep track of them, and another one's Saturday, and encourage anyone to be out there that can, that's here all the weekend.
Shawnee Mission.
Shawnee Mission Park, noon.
Shawnee Mission Park, late at 12 noon.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Allen.
Just had a good friend of mine, Tony Siderd's wife, longtime mayor and mentor of mine, and Shawnee Joyce passed away after a long illness, unfortunately, that funeral's Saturday morning, so I'll miss the park opening, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Osterhaus.
Quite a few things going on in the 4th District, well, slightly outside the 4th District, but I'll echo Commissioner Schaefer's comments about the Public Policy Council, it was really well-attended and to the point where they couldn't get through all the questions. And I'll also appreciate the shout-out, recognizing me for the bacon that always seemed to get, ends up on my plate.
Baconator.
Baconator. We also had this week, Commissioner Brown and I met for workforce development, so some really great things going on there. We approved their budget for the next year, so they're good, they've actually come across some extra WIOA funds, so they're a little larger than last year, so they're doing some great things. Also at our JCDS board meeting later that day, things are, things are good at JCDS, and they even were okay that we took, we took their communication director back to replace ours, who's getting married, so they were actually okay with that, and they were good troopers, so. Finally, many of you know that I chaired the Shawnee Trails Nominating Committee for the Boy Scouts, and we're looking for various volunteers, a lot of different positions. We have every position filled, but we'd always like to have some, maybe leaders in training or people that would like to join and learn the ropes and move up the scale, so if you're interested in that, feel free to reach out to me, either here or at jasonosterhouse@gmail.com, and I'll be happy to get you plugged in.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman, several items, echo comments from previous commissioners about our planning department. On a grade scale, the planning department is in the A-plus category right now, so good job, good job, Jay, and to everybody there, it's, it's a relief to not have to think about that, it's really good. I was attended as liaison to the Airport Board, Airport Commission, yesterday, everything there is good. It was a 37-minute meeting, and we were out of there, not because we cut any corners, but it was a shorter agenda because there were a few less big items that needed to be discussed, and that was a relief. Would, on two personal notes, Olathe West Public Safety Program wrapped up last Thursday evening. The sheriff and Med Act have both played a key role in the public safety component of the 21st Century program there, and they will, in the future, the not very distant future, reap the rewards of that, so thank you to Paul and to our sheriff and to both of their, the office and the department there. And then, I have a senior that has graduated, so here he comes, Arkansas, thank you.
We do have a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for 11:00 AM today to further consideration of the 2019 budget. I should note, there is also a committee of the whole meeting scheduled for tomorrow, Friday, the 25th, however, if we're able to conclude our deliberations today, then that Friday meeting will be canceled, so that's the carrot I'm offering. I had the opportunity this past Tuesday, attended the Olathe Chamber Board meeting, and the presentation, special speaker was Larry Campbell, former state rep from Olathe, who's now the budget director, and he is optimistic about state revenues and obviously awaiting any Supreme Court decision. It's been mentioned, the groundbreaking at, or the ribbon cutting at Shawnee Mission Park on Saturday, and at 12 noon. I am always reluctant to take a personal privilege, but I will do so this morning. Yesterday was my mother's 99th birthday.
Wow.
We had a good conversation by phone, she is a resident in a senior living facility in the Wichita area, so again, happy birthday, Mom. That, we do not have a request for an executive session, so I think that concludes our printed agenda, we'll take a short break and come back for agenda review, followed by our committee of the whole meeting at 11:00 AM. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.